Calling the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. This is the Board of Directors' regular school board meeting for Monday, December 18th, 2023. Welcome to all of our visitors, guests, and media. Going to start tonight out as usual with the Board and Administration roll call. Mr. Felk here, Mr. Burns.
Here.
Ms. Danielson.
Here.
Ms. Schultz.
Here.
Ms. Getzko.
Here.
Ms. Nathan.
Here.
Mr. O'Neal.
Here.
Mr. Schuler.
Here.
Mr. Henin.
Here.
Ms. O'Connell.
Here.
Ms. Peyton.
Here.
Ms. Dimmler.
Here.
Mr. View.
Here.
Mr. Samansky.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next up on the agenda is public comments. We have received none prior to the meeting. So our first action item is a motion to approve the attached agenda and addendums.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Danielson, seconded by Ms. Nathan. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries. Item three, the consent agenda, which includes the school board minutes for the regular school board meeting on November 27th, 2023, the personnel consent agenda, and the business consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, just a note, so everybody knows, the teachers' union contract is in the personnel consent agenda tonight. Thank you for the teachers, for their hard work in negotiating that contract. I know it took us a while this year, but I think it was good for everybody in the end, and it worked out well. And with that, I would move approval of the consent agenda.
Have a motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Mr. O'Neal. I'd also like to mention that the athletic director's contract is also located in that as well. So with that being said, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries. Item four, the recognitions, presentations, and showcase. We're actually going to start with Mr. Najjar tonight. Thank you for -- I thought you were going to speak.
I am, if you want.
I thought you was going to come up. So thank you, thank you overall for inviting the choir here to warm us up and get us all in the holiday spirit.
Yeah, glad to do it. Yeah, thank you for inviting me to talk about these kids. I'm really proud of all the work that they put in and pleased to tell you a little bit about what we've been up to. Over the last calendar year, starting in February, we hosted a large group choir contest. Concert Choir got a superior, which is the highest rating, and the Varsity Choir had a really good showing, too. They were just two points away from a superior. Then in March, we did the band and choir trip to Chicago, and I can't tell you how much fun that was. I could talk a long time about that, but I'll just give you a couple of the highlights. Mr. Otzot got married onstage when we went to see the Blue Man Group. We did a DJ dinner cruise. We had the entire yacht to ourselves on Lake Michigan. And then we had a great clinic with the college directors at the University of Wisconsin O'Clare as well. On April, we went to solo ensemble contest at Holy Family. We had around 15 to 20 students attend solo ensemble. Every single one of the performances got a superior, and then we got two best-in-sites as well. Let's see, in the beginning of this year, we'd introduced a new choir structure to the seventh and eighth grades, where we split up the tenor and bass voices with the soprano alto voices. We had to change the schedule around a little bit, and because of that, we're doing a one day a week full group, and then one to two days a week with a section rehearsal. But doing it that way has allowed for a lot more individualized attention, and even with a slight decrease in FaceTime, their performances improved dramatically, and I was really pleased with the concert they gave this December, and they showed just a tremendous amount of progress really quickly. And it's just because the music written for those types of voice types are just much better for their voices at that age. So I was really happy to see them do so well at that. And this December, you just heard the chamber choir before this meeting, but they're a really busy group. This calendar year, they performed at solo ensemble, pop concert, the mayor tree lighting, senior dinner, and then at the winter concert between the fifth and sixth grade portion and the seventh through 12th grade portion a week ago. I'm really happy about that group. They're giving a lot of freedom. I vet all the songs and make sure that we can find arrangements to sing, but for the most part, they pick all the songs and choose their own rehearsal schedules. So that's a really fun group that I can just kind of let them run a little bit of themselves. And then last week at the concert, we had a packed house at both concerts. The kids performed extremely well. We had a good amount of sickness run through the groups, but overall, it was just a really, really solid concert. We have some upcoming concerts in February and May as well, and then we're going to large group contest and solo ensemble again, possibly an Honor Choir Festival, too. Since COVID, we've rebounded really, really nicely, and just looking at some preliminary numbers, just a guess here, but it's looking like the concert choir will grow from about 45 to looking like maybe around 60 next year. So really, really happy to see that, and yeah, just thank you for having me. The kids are super dedicated, and it's nice to have a chance to talk them up, so thank you.
Thank you.
Tell them thank you again from all of us. All right, next up, we have the, I think it's, is it Mr. Samansky?
It is.
Now.
Come on, now it's your turn. To talk about the all-state recipients to start with.
I just get so excited. Okay, that time of year again, a good time of the year. Couple of different things that we have. The first one is we have some all-state recognition, and just a little bit about that, this is a Coaches Association Award, which means it's voted on by the coaches, not just our coaches, but coaches in our area and across the state. So this is quite an achievement, but so in the soccer world, this is a big deal. And this year, on the girls' soccer side, we have Lindsay Penigore and Ava Hune were all-state and recognized by the coaches across the state, so congratulations. And on the boys' side, we had Eli Hamburger. I don't think Eli is here tonight.
You can just keep rolling there.
All sorts of good things. The next recognition we have is two High School League awards. The first one is for juniors. It is the Excel Award, and each school across the state can nominate one boy and one girl. And in order to meet the criteria for this, again, you're a high school junior making satisfactory progress towards graduation, participate in High School League Fine Arts and/or athletic activities, hold leadership positions in their school, and work voluntarily in their community. So if you think of it, the Excel Award really focuses on just about anything and everything that you do is part of this. They're looking for any kind of leadership qualities that the students might have. And how this works is each school nominates two, and we send it into the High School League, and they get a big pile, a big stack of them, and then they sift through them, and they will whittle it down to about anywhere from 32 to 36 finalists that they will have. And that's kind of the crescendo of the Excel Award. But this year's nominee for us, oh, and I'll explain the process a little bit, and this same process we use for the AAA. In early November, I send out information to all the teachers, and basically with the criteria that I just mentioned, and say, please nominate. And we get a lot of nominations, and then we look up and take a look at the activities that they're in and all that sort of stuff, and then it goes to a committee, and the committee gets together, and we argue, and all this sort of stuff, and we narrow it down to our two. It's not an easy decision, which is a good problem to have, but it is still a problem. But this year, we are very fortunate because our two recipients for the Excel Award, Eddie And this year, the AAA, just a little bit about that, again, it's the same format as far as the criteria that we use, or not criteria, but the same process. But this is for high school seniors, and they are looking for cumulative GPA of 3.0 or higher, which these two easily did. Participate in league-sponsored athletic and fine arts activities, comply with High School League student code of conduct, and complete the application form and submit it to the administration. The AAA is a little bit different, and it's really only looking for high school league activities. So if you're in the musical, that's a great thing, but it doesn't go for the AAA. The musical is not a high school league activity. Speech is, for example. Debate would also be another example, those types of things. But it's one of those things where you really see a broad cross-section of our students in a sense, just how really stretched they are and really tapping into a lot of their talents, both academically, athletically, and in the arts. It's truly amazing. This year, our recipients are Lindsay Penigore. Just a little bit about the process with this, it's a little bit different as far as the steps moving forward. Right now, we've nominated our two, and they will go up against everybody in subsection 17, and there's about 10 schools that are there. There'll be a banquet on the 10th of January up in Maple Lake, and the judges will be there. Each of these young folks will get up and kind of do a little presentation, maybe two to four minutes, and basically talk about themselves a little bit, future plans. They're interested in hearing what's not on the application. And then after that, they will select a male and female, and that'll go on to the region. And sometime later in January, the four different subsections with the eight participants there will basically do the same format, and then a section will pick two, and then that'll move on to the High School League. So the High School League will have 32 to choose from, and they will narrow it down to two, one male and one female. So it is quite a process. It's great to be a part of, and we've got great students here, so it's really a fun process to take a look at all the activities that they're in and recognize these great individuals. So, thank you.
All right, moving on with the action items, the second and final read of district policies requiring review. This is for policy 503. Superintendent Schuler.
Yes, Mr. Chair, our last meeting, we did a first read of our student attendance policy 503. Again, want to thank the Policy Committee and certainly our principals for doing most of the legwork in revising the policy. It is in its final draft form and ready for board approval.
And so all the building administration had a hand in reviewing these?
They did. I think they met multiple times to kind of come to an agreement per building on what those attendance policies look like at each specific building, so.
Okay.
Yes, because one of the pieces that was missing was the unexcused absences and what the appropriate number would be there, and so they were able to come to a consensus on what that number should be.
Repeatable by building, I like it.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve policy 503 for student attendance.
I'll second.
Have a motion made by Mr. Felk, seconded by Ms. Getzko. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries. Action item B, the first read of district policies requiring review. This is for policy 606.5, library materials. Superintendent Schuler.
Again, Mr. Chair, this is the first read of a new policy, 606.5, library materials. Again, this is a recommended policy by the MSBA, the School Board Association, and again, myself, Mr. View, our media aides, all had a big part in having some feedback in terms of this policy. We also looked at other districts in the area, and also had our school district attorney review the policy and begin moving forward. Again, we just wanted a formal policy in place as, you know, districts are receiving from time to time requests from parents, questioning a particular book. This gives us a nice format and a process to use in terms of if that would come to fruition. As you can see, it does kind of outline it very clearly on the process, starting with the request coming to the principal, the principal making a decision, probably more than likely to pass it on to the committee. You can see the committee is outlined there and what that looks like and who would be a part of that committee. It's pretty expansive as well. Our Policy Committee also had an opportunity to weigh in, and we got some really good feedback from them as well, and some questions, just again, on how books are typically selected, you know, how do we go with process you go through in that purchasing of materials. Obviously, it looks pretty similar across the district through our library aides and how they select those books, so a pretty straightforward process. So yeah, this has been, it's been a good process. I think we've got a lot of good feedback, a lot of good folks weighing in, and again, thanks to Mr. View for doing most of the legwork and getting that to today's first No approval.
Motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Ms. Schultz. Any further discussion on the first read of policy 606.5? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries. Item C, resolution to combine polling places, resolution 24.11. Mr. Schuler.
Yes, again, recommended by MSBA that on a year that we possibly won't be having any election, but there is the possibility of a board member possibly leaving us, and we have to replace that board member. This allows us, if that would happen, to do one single polling place. Again, you can see on the resolution, the number of current locations, this can get it down to two polling places, Watertown City Hall and Mayor Community Center, rather than going to all those other locations, the township. The biggest piece there is just the cost. Again, typically, it's three individuals per site, and so the district is on the hook to pay for the fees for those individuals. For example, if it was a special school board election. So we put this in place to kind of combine those polling places for obviously a budgetary purpose of saving some money in an election like a special election.
So it's kind of just an annual?
It is an annual.
Annual review of us, just renewing that.
Correct.
And how is that communicated to the voters?
Pardon?
How is it communicated to the voters?
If we have to do a special election.
If we have to use it, how is it communicated that those would be going to?
Typically, we'd put that out in the newspaper. We'd have to make that announcement.
Public news.
It's, it is a.
So we all have to stay in district.
So everybody has to stay out. I make a motion to approve the resolution to combine polling places.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ms. Danielson, seconded by Ms. Getzko. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries. Item D, the acknowledgement of donations, contributions, and fundraising, which is resolution 24.12. Mr. Schuler.
Yes, we have some wonderful donations again this month, as you can see. I'll list those verbally here, starting with a donor, Cargill, donating to the robotics program for $1,000. Also, Gannigan Travel and Process Solutions, also donation to the robotics program for $1,000 for equipment. Katrina Gustafson, robotics donation for $250 for equipment. Also, American Legion Post 121 here in Watertown, donation to robotics for $1,000 for equipment. Ovation Orthodontics, also to robotics for $250 for equipment. Watertown Vet Clinic, also to robotics for $250 for equipment. Watertown Mayor FFA Alumni to robotics, $500 for equipment. Luther Brookdale Toyota Robotics, $2,500 for laptops for the robotics program. Also, the Lions are donating to the nurse's office, $500 for boy health packets. Bremer Bank, also to robotics for $250 for equipment. And also, last but not least, Mayor Area Lions, $250 for robotics for equipment. So again, thank you to those individuals and businesses.
Need to require the robotics team to help fundraise for everything else.
They do, well.
I can tell. I'll make a motion to approve the donations, contributions, and fundraising this month.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Felk, seconded by Mr. Burns. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries, and thank you, I kind of say it every month, but thank you to everyone who donates every month. There are certain programs that just couldn't do it without it, so. Moving on, item E, the 2425 school calendar, the second reading. Mr. Schuler.
Again, Mr. Chair, this is our second read of our calendar for 2425 school year. Again, same format as it left the board last month, there has been no changes, but again, looking for that final, second and final read, approval.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar 2024-2025 as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ms. Getzko, seconded by Ms. Danielson. Any further discussion on the 2425 calendar? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries, and that ends the action items tonight, record time here. Moving on to the review and information items, the bond referendum project updates. Mr. Zeimer.
Thank you. Quick update as to where we're at. The greenhouse, the heaters actually arrived ahead of schedule compared to what they were telling us, so they've been hung. Need to be hooked up yet, but we're looking by the end of the year yet, based on what we talked about. Electrical has been completely energized, and the tables have been delivered. Pool projects, last two weeks have been pretty productive. They've cured all the drains around the gutter to replace those, and they've been working on the main pool drains in the basin as of this week. So a lot of messy work in there, and they'll start cleaning that up as we get closer to installing new work. The equipment, shop drawings have been reviewed and has been ordered. We don't have exact date, but they're still holding firm that that equipment is still readily available, so no surprises there. And we've got the drawings in for review by the Minnesota Department of Health and the Plumbing Department, and anxiously awaiting those to return. Really doesn't affect anything except for the deck drains. For whatever reason, the plumbing department doesn't want us to start any work on those until we get the okay from them, so. But the pool and the filtration system, Department of Health is willing to work with us, and that'll continue on, so. Parking lots, we're issuing drawings this week. I believe we got the final drawings, so I know Dan was compiling those to get them onto Procore. We have a pre-bid walkthrough on the third after the new year, and then bid opening is on the 11th. As of right now, we've got quite a bit of interest, so we'll see in coming weeks how that materializes. And then the work is scheduled predominantly for this summer, so it'll start in June after school gets out. With the exception of the CLC, we'll probably start on the south side of the building, just because we've got two areas we can work in, get the south area done, and then potentially use that as our drop-off area while we work in the main parking lots, just because the main parking lot on the north and the west-east side there, quite a bit of involved work there. They're going to be cutting out the subgrade and rebuilding that with a more efficient flow. All that work, again, is scheduled to be complete at the end of August, so again, depending on the contractor or contractors we award to, we don't exactly know how that'll sequence out yet, but we'll know upon award. And then closeouts, it'll be a busy week over the break here. We've got contractors in the building working on touching up some of their work. The showers are being touched up tomorrow, actually, in the pool locker room, so hopefully we're wrapped up with those. Let's see. Flooring demo begins this Friday in the middle school, and then we've got a follow-up meeting on Wednesday of next week, just to talk about schedule, see how it's progressing, see how that demo's going, and new work to be installed. And then a carpet review meeting for a couple more floor classrooms over at the middle school, where carpet seems to be failing, warranty issue. So that'll occur tomorrow at 3 o'clock, and hopefully we'll get through that, and they'll be on full replacements. That's all I've got.
Everything on track?
Yes.
That's good news.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Strategic plan update. Mr. Schuler.
Yeah, just wanted to quickly note, this week or this month's communication for me out to families focuses around the learner outcome of, excuse me, the strategic commitment of financial stewardship. So in that, you'll notice there's some highlights in terms of our audit. Again, that happened last month, but also focuses a little bit on our unassigned fund balance policy, that 7% to 20%, and kind of where we fall there. And just some updates, too, on enrollment and how that does impact our budget moving forward and those EDMs. So you'll see that coming out this week as we go into break, so. Otherwise, again, I'm very pleased with the way the first half of the year essentially has been going in towards the movement of our plan. I know it's a topic of our leadership team's agenda every month, and we're checking in how we're doing. Even you'll notice on some of our admin reports today, obviously, there's a direct focus to the strategic commitment that we've made to address those, and you'll hear that in some of our reports tonight. So it's great to see that it's moving in the right direction. I feel we're making some really nice gains, holding true to what we committed to, so. That's the update. Any questions? Any questions?
All right. Moving on to the administrative reports. We'll start the night out as usual with Mr. Henon.
Good evening. I have one thing. It's tied to that strategic plan that Darren just talked about. Our counselors did a check-in with our students and we got about 220 some responses and they asked the three questions that we asked at the end of your survey. So first question was, I have at least one adult work at the school that cares about me and wants me to succeed. About 96% that strongly agree or agreed. And then another question was, I feel seen valued in her at school. We had about 90% that says strongly agree or agree. And then question, third question was, I have at least one classmate that cares about me and wants to succeed and about 97% strongly agree or agree. So we were happy given the results. I mean, we wanted more, but this was just more of a check-in and we, you know, about 50% response rate, so the counselors are going to take the information, follow up as needed, but I think it was just to give us a good baseline. But probably the most important, we asked the fourth question and this was probably the most important thing we did, is we actually asked, if you're willing, can you give an example or two of an action that a staff member took that showed they cared about your success or wellbeing? And the reason we asked is because I think there's always a disconnect sometimes as adults. We think like, oh, we have a great connection with that kid and we have our impression of a connection, but what does that mean to a 15, 16, 17, 18-year-old kid? So we actually asked if they're willing to give and again, I'm not, about 170 gave examples and I'm not going to have to read them all, but it was helpful, I think, that we're going to share with teachers and counselors, nurses, pares were listed, there was a custodian listed. It was just really cool to see some of the, and you know, sometimes as simple as they asked me how I was doing, they greeted me by name every day, they asked how I was doing even when I wasn't in their class anymore. They pointed out the positive things that I do every day. So it was interesting because I think that will help us as adults understand like it's little things that sometimes mean the most to kids and it's those consistent check-ins we do, asking them again how they're doing and, you know, we all get wrapped up in what we know as teachers or administrators about the content we know, but in the big scheme of things, I didn't see too many going, man, they know a lot about math. You know, that's not, no, I'd say that's not important, but what to them is that we care about them and that we show them success. And there was even one that was highlighted that the counselors told me that students is going through some tough times, but they put a comment and they said, I have seven people that every day show they care about me even though sometimes I don't show them back I care. It was pretty enlightening because I think it does show that it doesn't, sometimes the kids that you think maybe aren't appreciating what we do, they really do. So again, it was really good information. We gleaned a lot from it that we probably wouldn't have, we wouldn't have asked that question because the other ones are numbers. This actually gave us real examples, so I think we're going to keep doing things like this, we're going to ask them. And we did something similar for academics where we asked them about, you know, opportunities that we should have at school, so. Students give really good feedback. Something I've learned over the years that, you know, when we ask them, they're really good about helping us, so. But that was the, just I wanted to share that because I thought that was, it gives us good base on and good information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Mr. Gertin is not here tonight, so we have Mr. Schuler giving his monthly update.
I will. Yeah, thank you. So just a few items from Mr. Gertin tonight, very much in line with what Mr. Henon said. The middle school also did a student survey that was administered back in November and some of the feedback that they received was really good as well and it's basically connected on connectedness and safety, where there are two areas that they were focusing in on. But he noted 86% of students participated in the survey, 82% feel connected at least to one teacher, and 87% feel safe at school. So they are taking those results and they're reviewing those with staff and the leadership team is in the process of developing, building norms for staff to follow in response to some of the feedback they received. Also, he noted that they are really moving forward with one of their academic goals and that is for 85% of students to score above the 65th percentile on the Spring Fastbridge Reading and Math Assessment and score a proficient level on the 2024 Reading and Math MCA. So again, the 65th percentile correlates to a passing score on the MCA, so they're working towards that. The math and language arts departments have developed new assessments and are accurately indicating where students are at in terms of mastering standards. And that work has been going, ongoing since the summer even, so doing a really nice job with that. Also, he just wanted to note some recognition. There's a toy drive that just wrapped up. You may even seen it on some of our social media, but 152 toys were collected for the annual toy drive and they were distributed to families at Bremer Bank in Watertown. And again, thanks to everyone for their donations on that. And to mark your calendars, he noted, for the Saturday, January 27th, that is the annual family bingo night in the cafeteria. Dinner will start at 5:00 PM. Bingo starts at 6:00 and runs till 8:00 o'clock. And this is the big PTO fundraiser. I'm looking at Mrs. Danielson, I know you're involved in this, so this is a big one. And again, they're looking for donations. So gift cards of $5 to $10 increments and prizes, movie tickets and such, and there'll be a signup genius going out soon for volunteers and, do you want to add anything?
Little Debbie snack cakes are a huge, a huge hit.
Wow.
Kids love those, so if you're looking to donate, Little Debbie snack cakes.
The bar is pretty low.
Yeah.
All right. That is all I have for Mr. Gertin. Thank you.
All right. Ms. O'Connell.
I hope you have Mr. Burns calling.
Yes, Mr. Burns will be calling again.
Okay. Tonight, I'm just going to focus on sharing some events with you that tie into students feeling connected to our school. So we'll be hosting our second Royal Recognition Award Ceremony, recognizing our students for being caring, safe problem solvers, with a focus on emotion management this Wednesday afternoon. So there are two students from every classroom who get selected for that and their parents are invited. It's a really fun event that kids don't know that they're going to win. We'd like it to be a big surprise, but when they walk into the gym and they see their parents, they kind of figure it out. But it's a great event nonetheless. We're also focusing on building our culture and connectedness through Spirit Week this week, so today's theme was over the river and through the woods, so everyone was wearing camouflage. Tomorrow is candy cane, so everyone will be in red and white. And then we have a pajama day later in the week and Wednesday is pattern day, patterns and PTO potluck. And on Thursday afternoon, we will be ending our 2023 year together of that time by playing all-school bingo. Mr. Schuler has signed up to be one of our callers. We've done this a few times in the school, just through Google on all the classroom screens and it's a lot of fun. The kids really enjoy it. We have our kindergarten roundup planned for January 11th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, so we've been working on planning that event and making sure the mailings are out and everybody knows to come attend. We're switching it up a little bit and providing even more hands-on activities for kids and families to enjoy and experience so they can see our spaces and see our teachers and get a feel for who we are. And lastly, February is I Love to Read Month. Our theme for this year is Story Laboratory and we will have a connection within that month on STEAM and science. February 29th from 4:00 to 6:00 will be our evening event that ties to that. We've also reached out to our high school to get some input too, so the robotics club is not able to attend, but they're putting together a video that can be shared on a loop that evening. And then, Bob, help me with the name of it, but the car club? Super mileage is coming to do a demo that night for the kids too, so. Questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Dimler.
Good evening. So Community Ed is really wrapping up its fall activities this week with the last of our classes ending tomorrow. And our winter-spring registration is open and going strong with programming starting January 3rd, so we are excited and ready to go. And that week, we will also be sending our information about summer, so. So I know we are thinking about it. We have recently updated our marketing materials, so we have updated baby cards, first birthday and childcare and preschool marketing materials, ready to go. And we are getting ready for our preschool open house and childcare open house on January 25th. So we look forward to being at the kindergarten royal roundup and then welcoming families in on the 25th with the registration opening that night. So that is what is going on in Community Ed right now. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Samansky.
A couple of things from the world of activities. Currently, we have two positions open. We've got girls soccer that is currently open and clay target, which is still open. We'll have a new one. It's not official yet, but that'll be posted here pretty soon. Robotics advisor was filled internally with Nick Dinami, so we're always in the process, I shouldn't say always, but finding coaches, finding advisors, it's an ongoing thing. So we're very thankful for those that we have and we're thankful for those that make the choice to become coaches and advisors. It's a great line of work. Scheduling for 24-25, 90% of fall is complete. Winter is just beginning for next year. Foundation A and B grants have been submitted. We should find out information sometime in January. Winter seasons have started, so basically all activities and all winter sports are underway, up and running. Final participation numbers will be available in January once middle school boys basketball starts, so we'll get the final numbers. Right now, we're down a few, but we're not down a significant number, so we're hoping that the middle school boys basketball bounces back to about even. And we've enjoyed early season success with all our teams. I think all of our teams currently right now have winning records and have enjoyed some success. Wrestling went down to a very difficult tournament in Rochester over the weekend and performed very, very well. Gymnastics was up in Purim and finished second with a young team. Boys and girls basketball both have winning records, so it's been exciting. And some of the activities, they're just getting started. Speech is underway. Mock trial had an event this past weekend, so it's becoming busier and busier as the weeks go. We'll have a little bit of break now and then we'll hit the January and February and the March to tournament time, so that's where we're at in activities.
Thank you. Mr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few things. I know Ms. O'Connell mentioned kindergarten roundup on January 11th. It's earlier this year. I appreciate that she mentioned that, but again, we want to capture parents and students earlier this year to try to get that number up. As you remember, last spring and summer, we struggled to get that number where we needed to, so really getting the word out and I want to give kudos to the elementary staff. It's kind of all hands on deck to make this happen and get that word out and support families in registering on time, so again, we appreciate that. And by the way, it is a class of 2037, so put that into your thought process for a minute. 2037, yeah. And they even developed a cool QR code to RSVP for that night, so again, we're going all stops to make this happen and get registration up early this year. Also, speaking of communication, our final site, website, which we're converting to as we speak, has been delayed a little bit. We hope to have that open on the 20th, the week of the 22nd of January. Actually, I hope Ms. Zeraka can come to the January board meeting to kind of give you an overview. We have a few board members there, the tech committee, they're going to take a peek at that as well in advance of that night to give some feedback. But we're in the final stages, I should say we, she's done the majority of that work and has been working really hard behind the scenes to make that conversion. A little bit reasons for the delay is it didn't transfer as well as we thought it would from our current site onto the new site, so it's just been a little bit, it's kind of a one-person show, if you will, so we're as good as fast as she can go to make that transition. But I know she's met with a lot of different groups, met with the admin assistants last week to kind of get them up to speed on their role in converting and so again, I hope at our next meeting, we can show kind of unveiling, if you will, of what the new site looks like, so.
It looks like the app has updated a little bit, so that has already, that process already started?
Yep. Yeah. So we'll have that update in the January meeting. Also, I noticed Mr. Burns had noted just thanks to the contract, teachers contract. I also want to note too, behind the scenes, Ms. Raider and Mr. Rundell have been putting in a lot of time just cleaning the contract up and it wasn't things that were necessarily talked about in negotiations, but it was agreeable in terms of just some cleanup on the language and things that I know they spent a lot of time over the last couple of weeks and Mr. Rundell's here as well, but I don't think people realize that, but it was a much-needed cleanup and Lisa said, I'm going to take this on this time and again, I appreciate their work on that to come to conclusion. And then last but not least, Mr. Zeimer mentioned a lot of construction projects. That pool project, I think I sent the update out last weekend there and you can see what's happening in the pool. It's pretty substantial, I think more than I think we even realized when we got into it. It's a major overhaul and much needed is the more we get into it, the more we realize how bad it was and it'll be nice to see that upgrade. And greenhouse as well is coming to fruition. Mr. Burns is putting some extra hours up there as well, so I want to thank him. Again, kind of unknown, but he crawls up there at night and is working on some wiring pieces and never know he's going to show up, so. But he would not be at it where it's at right now if it wasn't for Mr. Burns, so again, thank you for your work on that. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to board member reports. Anybody have any committee meeting reports since the last month?
No. Marketing and Communications has adjusted to January 17th at 6:30 because we were originally going to meet on the 8th, but.
Personnel committee, we've got par professionals on the 4th.
Is that pares are the last group?
Yes.
Yes.
Until next year. Last week, we had a community education advisory committee meeting and everything that we talked about, Ms. Dimler covered. Sounds like everyone's really excited for the new parking lot, to get that up to speed as well as, we showed some pictures of the pool project, so a lot of that cat committee was quite surprised at where we were at and they were excited about where we're fixing it and where we're heading on that, so. I know that that's been kind of a pain because that, all those swimming classes are always full, so the faster we can get it done, make it more usable for everybody, so. Anybody else? All right. Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Danielson, seconded by Mr. Burns. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at 6:45 PM.